I call the meeting to order and I'm going to report that during closed session, we, well before closed session actually, we had a workshop on the survey results we're taking regarding whether or not we want to have a bond on the November ballot. And then we had a, took an action unanimously to approve the suspension without pay of a classified employee. And that takes care of what we did before this time session. And now we're into the open session, obviously. And I, let's see, Mr. Klavia, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just like, we have a guest with us tonight, Dr. Paul Levine, who is the executive director of our Selpa, which is here to help us honor one of the Selpa employees. Thank you for coming this evening. We'll have you come up, you want to come up when we do that? Okay, thank you. Next is our reports and recognitions, and we have our superintendent's report, Dr. Crop.
Thank you, Madam President, esteemed members of the board and people here tonight. Thank you for being here. So I want to highlight a few things for the end of the year. And so it's small there, but really important. So, and these are just a few of the highlights from our district for the 2015-16 school year. First off, we are California Gold Ribbon District, meaning every single school has been acknowledged and received the Gold Ribbon, the California Gold Ribbon Award. Our S-BAC results are now in. We don't have all of the breakdowns, but we clearly have the results across the district. And we went up at every grade level and in every subject tested. Our A through G completion rates rose to 77 percent, and that's up 15 percent in the last five years. And those are students that have completed the college entrance requirements with a C or better. We are the only district in Orange County and one of five in the United States named to the College Board's honor roll six years in a row. And I think it's important to remind people that that means you've increased access and maintained or increased the results, which is very hard to do, and I'm just can't say enough about our staff for supporting that work. Forty-one athletes accepted college scholarship. Sometimes we're spoiled and we think that that's okay, but that's a lot. Some districts might have three. We have ten Sunset League Champions. That's crazy, crazy outstanding, excellent. Our choir and song, varsity song, are national champions. This is about the third time for our choir group, and song has done it before also. So this is not an unusual occurrence, but rather amazingly routine. We have a lot of awards for band, drama, improv, robotics, and MUN. For example, improv, won at the state level two years in a row, first time ever. Our robotics team, first time ever, won California and got to compete nationally. And we never even had a robotics team before. We have band has won so many California and local, it's really impressive. Because remember, we have marching band, color guard, orchestra, and many levels of band. Our STEAM programs have increased. So we started with our elementary Makerspace Labs, and then we went to Project Lead the Way at our middle schools. Those will expand next year. And high school now, we hired Martin Valenzuela to run engineering. He runs a full five periods a day, and if it grows anymore, we'll be hiring a second teacher. We have exemplary intervention and bridge programs year round. We have two new bridge programs happening this summer. So to get more of our students in the A through G completion program, which is biology, we have a bridge program this summer for students that were recommended for life science, that they can come in this summer and learn academic vocabulary and some other skills to help them be successful in biology. We have a continued joint partnership with the SRO, which is just a thank you to our community. So Seal Beach Community pays 25 percent, Los Alamitos City pays 50, and the district pays 25. We did have a meeting with supervisor still, and it was a very positive with her staff. It was a very positive meeting. They will be having a discussion with their board to see if they will contribute, and then Ross Moore will also be contributing toward the SRO. Hopefully. Yeah, I shouldn't say that. That meeting has not happened, but it's going to happen. We completed our Measure K on time and on budget. And I know if you read the paper, that's not the case everywhere. And to keep everyone, just a reminder that there is a citizens oversight committee to make sure that that money is spent on time and on budget and properly as it should have. We've increased safety measures such as, I only listed a few, fencing. And as you know, right now, we're putting security cameras at the high school. We have a strong budget with funds that we've set aside for GAZB-45, Fund 17, Economic Uncertainty, and routine maintenance and technology, which are really important going forward, the future for our children. LoSal Connects, TOSA Coaching, and voluntary training have increased in so many ways. I just will say a few. We tried staff development to be voluntary this year, and just in one junior grade books, we invited fourth and fifth grade teachers, and all but one initially said yes. It's been that powerful, and we couldn't be more pleased. LoSal Connects, where our own teachers lead sessions, is strong. We have it during the year, and we're also having it this summer. So once again, that's really taken off here. We now have, I can remember when the board said, this is years ago, but we need to get signature practices at all of our schools. And we really have signature practices in all of our schools and classrooms, and we're the variances where people are at in their training. But we're always along that continuum so that everyone becomes excellent in every signature practice. We also increased technology. Remember, we deployed IT people to the sites, and that has made a big difference. So what are the needs then? Because obviously, I've just said everything that's phenomenal. And so we still have a need for additional technology and social media support. So what's happening in the era of social media are things like quick two-minute videos, and you know Twitter, and Instagram, and web pages, and Facebook, and all of that. And so it just adds a whole nother layer of support that our sites need, pictures, all of that. We do still have needs for facility improvements, including replacing our, some of our elementary playgrounds, additional shade structures, additional fencing, additional bathrooms. And as previously discussed, we fully modernized all sites except Los Alamitos High School, and that remains a need, is to finish that by modernizing the high school. And then I thought I would close with such a nice little piece of data here. In the class of 2016, the post-secondary plans, 34 percent for a two-year college, 57 percent for a four-year college, and military 4 percent, and undecided is 5. And I'd like to remind the board that many of our community college people do transfer. When we did our last longitudinal study about two or three years ago, in fact, it was three years ago, 92 percent of our graduates had graduated from college. That's really amazing. And so we didn't ever have data quite that high before, but even if we dropped a bit, we were the highest college enrollment rate in Orange County. So I just want to take a moment to say that it does take the vision of the board to do really courageous work and believe in possibilities for all of our kids. And I know I have a lot of staff here today, so Andrea, Cara, Michael, John, leading that work, and then teachers that you're going to hear more about later today, being recognized. And it really does take everyone. So I'm so grateful, and I have a saying, I like to say, that there's no place else I'd rather work, nobody else I'd rather work for, and no people I'd rather work with. I think LoSal is a great place to be for our families, because no matter how good this data is, I know that you will want it even better, and so will we. So, thank you.
Okay, now you get to hear my report. And pretty much what I'm going to talk about is, we have activities going on in the district, even though it is summer. And you may think that everything closes down, but it doesn't, and we have lots of things going on. I just want to highlight some of the things that are going on. We have from pre-K through fifth grade at Los Alamitos Elementary, we have 502 students, and they'll be going there from the 27th to the 22nd of July. And then at six through eight, we have 87 students at McCullough, and that too will be from, well, that's June 22nd to July 20th. And then at Los Alamitos High School, it's Oak Middle School is where that is, and there's two sessions, and so that's going on there. And I, these are, this is not everything that's going on, but Dr. Crop talked about our bridge classes that we have. And there is one on biology. Sometimes kids struggle with their life science class, and this gives support to them, and at the end, they're going to get, meet one of the A through G requirements. We also have an algebra bridge for eighth grade students to take algebra as a ninth grader. And we hope to have these students in one-year algebra program instead of the two-year algebra course. And then at McCullough, we have a novel study with academic vocabulary and writing with depth and complexity, which is one of our signature practices, for those students who received a DRNF on their semester report card. And in math at McCullough, they're giving a review of the seventh grade math standards for students who received a DRNF in the summers at their semester. So we're trying to remediate and help the kids that are struggling, and hopefully get them on the right track. That's...
Can I add in something? Mrs., Madam President? I think the board, if I could, President, really, I want to point out, we're one of the few districts that offers free summer school to our students at risk, and I think it's worth taking an extra mention. So thank you so much for reporting this. We get requests every summer for kids in other districts who are desperate for this help for free, and I couldn't be prouder that the board has prioritized, even during the budget crisis, to provide this extra education for our most at-risk students.
The rest of them are all math interventions for students, and the bridge, we have math intervention at McCullough, excuse, yeah, bridge at McCullough, and it's for fifth grade students that were struggling. And then we also have our special ed, which is near and dear to my heart, since I'm on the Selpa board, at five through six at McCullough, and it's for extended school year program, which is really, is required on their IEPs. And then we have grade seven and eight at McCullough as well, and it's also the extended school year program. And Los Alamitos Elementary have 25 kindergarten through fourth grade general ed summer school courses, which involve English language learners, math and writing, curriculum infuses math, wall, CGI, which is our cognitively guided instruction, and using, will be the use manipulators, and reading interventions, and so on down the line, as well as reading labs. So we're trying to make sure that all our students are getting on track to go through the regular course of work. And then we have enrichment at Lee Elementary, and we have over 80 classes for TK through 12, and they're taught by credential teachers. And then LEAF is partnering with the coaches. We started this a few years ago, which has been very successful, to have our camps run through LEAF. And I think that the coaches that have tried in the past really liked it. And then we also have had some camps in the arts and excite for show choir dance and instrumental music. Okay? Been busy, busy center. Now we have the recognition of our community advisory awardees.
Dr. Keller.
Shall I come again?
Dr. Keller.
Thank you, Madam President. Russell, STEAM members of the board, Dr. Crop, executive cabinet members, cabinet members, and community, teachers, staff, et cetera. Tonight, it's a great celebration tonight for some of our outstanding staff members. We have more than 200 staff members that serve students in preschool through adult transition programs. Many teachers, staff members, obviously, it takes a family to raise students with special needs, and tonight, we're excited to recognize some really outstanding individuals who have made the difference in the lives of students with disabilities. So first off, I'd like to bring up Mr. Rick Rousher. And Mr. Rousher won our community advisory committee award in May of 2016. He teaches in a special day class program at Los Alamitos High School for students in ninth through 12th grade, students with autism primarily, so it's an applied behavior analysis class. Mr. Rousher has a special way with students, connects with them in an outstanding way, and really gets great results. And I just want to read some nice words that a parent had said in his nomination. "Mr. Rousher impressed me with his intelligence, enthusiasm, and sense of humor. His ability to connect with his students was immediate." And we'd just like to recognize you as being an outstanding team member and making great things happen for our students, so congratulations. Next up, I'd like to recognize Ms. Jamie Shannon, an instructional assistant at Los Alamitos High School. Ms. Shannon has worked in the district since 1980. And she's been an instructional assistant since 1988 with us. She's been a recent recipient of the Greater Anaheim Selpa's Community Advisory Committee Award for 2016 for outstanding contributions in the lives of students with disabilities. Congratulations for that. One parent wrote in her nomination letter for Ms. Shannon, "Her compassionate heart wants success for all students. She truly cares. It's such a comfort to know that our son is under the watchful eye and loving heart of Ms. Shannon." So we're very happy to recognize you this evening, and congratulations on your excellent work. And lastly, we have a very special recognition. We contract with our, what's called our Greater Anaheim Selpa, to provide some extra support services in our regional autism program. Some of the employees that work in our programs really do outstanding work, and they really treat and provide services for many of our students. And so tonight, I'd like to recognize Ms. Sandra Birkencamp. Mrs. Sandra Birkencamp. So Mrs. Birkencamp works in our kindergarten regional autism program class. She has worked in the, how many years have you worked in that class? Fifth year. And she's been providing outstanding work in that program. She has a high level of expertise with applied behavior analysis. She does, gets great results with students, but most importantly, she really connects with students with her warmth and loving spirit. So we're so excited to recognize her tonight. She was the Greater Anaheim Selpa's Employee of the Year for 2015-16, and we just want to recognize her for outstanding contributions. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Levine, who might have some extra things to say. He's our Greater Anaheim Selpa Executive Director.
Well, thank you for having me this evening. I want to, first of all, thank you for allowing us to have our CAC recognition in your beautiful boardroom. A few months ago, that was, that was an excellent evening. So thank you very much for, for having us there. I think I had to hold this last time, too, because I'm pretty tall. Just a few words about our award. Our Board of Trustees with Mrs. Russell is on our board and created this award a few years back, which is called the Outstanding Services for Students with Special Needs Award to Selpa staff members. And in the past, Frank Donovan has won that, Glenda McHale has won that. Sandra has the honor of being the first ABA facilitator to win that award. So that was really exciting. Our committee immediately selected her. She was a first-ballot vote, if you follow the Hall of Fame for baseball. She was like a first-ballot vote in our committee, and we were all very excited for her to receive that award. So congratulations. One other quick comment, I'd just like to compliment your board here. For many years, I've worked for the Selpa, I was a director of special ed for the Savannah School District for the last 10 years before taking on this role. And because it was a small district, we would often send our students to the Los Alamitos programs. And I can tell you that every time I sent students here, I was very confident at the progress they would make. So I want to compliment you on your wonderful programs led by Dr. Keller and all your staff. So thank you very much for your support for your programs.
To come all this way up here to announce a recess. So, we're going to have a recess, and what we do is we take pictures up here in the front, because Mrs. D'Angelo takes the pictures, and so please come on up and have your pictures taken. Do we have cookies? Oh, cookies in back. Most important thing. Come back to order. And we're first, next we'll be on our consent agenda, and I think I have a poll.
Yes, I'd like to poll 10.
I'm sorry, we have information.
We have information.
We need to be informed.
Okay.
Presentation of supplemental materials, Dr. Crop.
Community and staff participation.
Well, we didn't get any slips.
All right, so thank you. I'm presenting information today that they piloted in special education. It's used for Algebra 912 at the high school. It's an online program that also tracks students until mastery that teachers are using to help them teach algebra concepts to our students.
Okay, thank you. That's just information at this time.
Yes, I do have a quick question. Are we finding that there's more programs like this that we can customize that help a certain segment of students? Is that what we're using?
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
So my question was, are we finding that we utilize programs like this that we can customize to target certain students?
Yes, and I just want to have a cautionary word. So yes, there are hundreds, literally thousands actually, of apps. And so I think it sometimes is, use this app, use this app. So we do have a process where we get people to pilot the app to see what really benefit that it has, because we're still believers that nothing replaces the teacher, and we certainly don't want our students at a computer. But we think blended programs probably have the best chance of being successful, and so yes, those we've increased a great deal. Because when you can have software that's adaptive, so that once I hit a question that's hard, I can back it up, it would be very difficult for a teacher to be that adaptive in the second to every student at every level of a problem. So I think the blending is ideal.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent. Now, Mrs. Hill.
Okay, I would like to poll 1000.
Okay, any other polls? Okay, seeing none, a motion would be in order to approve A through NN and PP through TT. Also move if I don't have to repeat that. A second. Okay, properly moved and seconded. Any discussion for the seeing none? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. And now item, oh, oh.
I will make a motion that we pass item 1000.
I'll second.
And I, I would like to speak to the item. I'm trying to find the item so I can make sure that I, properly. It's a ratification for software and that will help us configure videos surveillance system at Los Alamitos High School. There's a couple of other items on here as well, but I just chose one of them, because I just wanted to talk about what we're doing at the high school and how I, security, you know, we gave Dr. Crop the directive about two years ago, two and a half years ago, that security was very important, and we, and she's come so, so far. I mean, we hired a consultant and looked at what we thought were very safe campuses and realizing that we had some holes that we needed to fill, and have done a great deal of work. And it makes me, it makes me very proud and makes me feel more confident about our students, and our parents should feel that as well. But there's still a lot left to be done. And one of the things we're doing is video cameras at the high school. It's a large campus, and it has activity on it practically 24/7. And so we really think that it would, it will also help with some of that as well. And also, I just wanted to say that I was really touched when I found out that our educational foundation also made a donation, a sizable donation, to these surveillance cameras. And it's just a testament to, that they really care about the district as a whole. And some people just look at them as being, oh, they offer programs, and no, their, their mission really is to support the district in as many ways as possible. And so I'm just very appreciative of all that great work. Thank you very much.
Okay, so there is a motion before you to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the items, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. And we're on now to action items, and Dr. Crop, approval of the Local Control and Accountability Plan.
So thank you. As you will recall, at the last board meeting, we had our, our public hearing on the Local Control Accountability Plan, and we also had a presentation. And tonight, it's before the board for approval.
Okay. I will move approval of the LCAP as presented. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I'll just say thank you to all the hard work that it went, went into this, and to the community that was part of it as well. I think it's spectacular.
I have to thank the community as well for giving their input in our town hall meetings and the various venues that we were able to get input for that. So, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. And we're on now to the adoption of our 2016-17 annual budget. Ms. Meyer.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we are presenting for approval, the 2016-17 annual budget. It was presented at the last board meeting, similar to the LCAP. You had a public hearing, took any input, and is, is presented to you, and you actually have a hard copy tonight as well. And it's ready for your approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I would like to make a comment. I forwarded an email earlier today that probably no one ever had any time to read, but the governor has signed the budget with basically almost no changes to the budget as far as education is concerned. So your presentation probably does not need to be amended hugely, so that's always a joyful thing for the finance department.
Okay, we need a motion.
I'll so move, I'll move approval of the budget as presented.
Any second?
I'll second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of our budget, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. And we have next approval of an addendum to the superintendent's contract. That's before you, and we've discussed this ad nauseam, I think. No. No. Anyway, that's just a usual thing, so I, motion would be in order to approve this. Also move. Properly moved, seconded, okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. And then we approve of the contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and the Director of Classified Personnel. I'll move approval of contract as presented. Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. And we're on to the adoption of a resolution to authorize signers for our child development services state preschool contract. So this is a roll call. So can I have a motion to approve? I'll so move. Second, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, there's a roll call. Aye. Mrs. Russell? Aye. Ms. Gattulie?
Aye.
And Mr. Boya?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries 4-0. And we're on to the, another resolution to utilize the California Participating Association of Procurement for Officials of Value Point Master Agreement, number whatever, want to wait, approved by the State Department of General Services for Dell products and services. Okay, is there a motion to approve? Also move. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Properly moved and seconded.
I just want to, this one, what this resolution is, is for us to piggyback on to other contracts already, already negotiated, so that we can get the benefit of their pricing.
Right, okay. Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Gattulie?
Aye.
Mr. Boya?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. And we're on to another multiple award services contract, the GSA awarded to Technique for Information Technology Computer Equipment and Services. I'll move approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Properly moved and seconded. Ms. Meyer, did you want to say anything about that? It's just a...
Again, it's a piggyback of all state-level bids that we can access and get better pricing for equipment.
Okay, it's a roll call. Mrs. Hill? Aye. Mrs. Russell? Aye. Ms. Gattulie?
Aye.
Mr. Boya?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 4-0. And another resolution to... And another resolution to, let's see, National Association of State Procurement Officials Value Point Master Agreement approved by the State of California. Another piggyback, is that for...
And this one's for HP equipment.
Okay.
I'll move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seeing, motion is in order, it's a roll call. Mrs. Hill?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Gattulie?
Aye.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Okay, next is not a resolution. It's acceptance of a bid and approval of a contract with our Dependable Construction to install and set up a relocatable classroom at Oak Middle School. We've been waiting for this for a long time.
Yes.
Ms. Meyer, would you like to say?
Yes, this was a second round bid. We didn't have bidders the first time, so we redid it and it is presented to you with the lowest responsible, responsive, responsible bidder of our Dependable for the work. This is for the, what we call the site work.
I just would like a clarification on what the portable is going to be used for?
Additional, it's a two portable, two classrooms. It's additional classrooms.
Okay, I just wanted to make, it wasn't anything, it wasn't a specialized classroom, just regular classrooms.
No, just regular classrooms.
No, and I'll add, if it's okay, I think it's important, last year, we had about six teachers sharing rooms at Oak.
Yes.
And I don't think that maximizes, as Mrs. Russell, you can remember being a teacher, you're, you're then hauling your stuff around and your room isn't set up to maximize how you would like it. So this is really going to make a big difference for some teachers at Oak.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say, do we have a motion?
No, we need a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Probably moved and seconded.
You guys are doing just great, so I'm not going to get in the way.
Oh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0. And we're next to approval of 218, 20, 18, 20, 19, and 20, 19, 20, 20 calendars. Dr. Pulver.
Thank you, Madam President, and team members of the board. As part of our negotiations with our employees, we always negotiate calendar, but one of the things that we're always mindful is to have our calendars approved multiple years out so that it's predictable for our families, that they can make long-term plans for vacations, et cetera. So the 18, 19, and 19, 20 calendars is actually three and four years away, if you can believe that. Before we began negotiations with our association, we surveyed our families and the association surveyed their members to help inform the process. And these are the calendars that they voted on and approved.
And these will go out to the community on approval.
Once, once the board finalizes the, the process, we will send out an email to our families. The six, the next two years are already on our, on our website.
Okay.
I would just like to comment that...
Can we have a motion first, please?
Also move, approval.
Oh, second, okay.
And my comment is, is that one of the things that as a individual board member that I've never been able to do, because I'm not that powerful, is I really believe in more of an extended school year because you don't have to worry about what the kids are losing during the summer. And these two calendars, after discussing, discussing it with all of our staff and getting input, is going to have our schools starting much earlier in August, but they have a week off for Thanksgiving, that entire week off, the regular winter break, they'll have a week off in February and a week off for spring break. And they will be getting, well, and our school will be ending at the very end of May. What I like about that is that it doesn't have that long summer break as long as it was before. There'll be multiple times during the years for families to get together and do things. In our particular little community, we have two cities that run rec programs. Tomorrow, we're meeting with Seal Beach. They will get a copy of this calendar, everything will be adjusted. And I think it's a good calendar to optimize student learning and that's what we're here for.
Okay, any other comments, suggestions?
I would just say too, I like the fact that we're lining things up with students attendance and having a full week of Thanksgiving off is making a lot of sense since we used to do half-days for three days and we're always going to lose students. And I think it'll be great now that my kids have graduated from high school, that we will have a ski week.
We'll also tie the end of the first semester to right before winter break. So some of the things that we heard from families and teachers was that they can actually enjoy the winter break because they're not having to...
And not have a major project for a kid to do over winter break.
Yeah, so I, I just think it's great that we, you know, put those things together and staff's looking at those things because, you know, there's nothing worse than you're trying to get the kid to do that project that's, you know...
Finally getting away from the agrarian calendar.
Yes.
Since we're not, we don't have any crops out here, no more sugarbeets.
Well, we have a doctor crop.
So we do have a proper motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0. And now we're on to approval of warrants of over a million dollars and we have 40-some pages of warrants to go over.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Who counts?
Yeah, right. Not when you're reading them.
Yeah.
Okay, motion would be in order to approve the warrants.
I'll move... Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants as presented.
I'll second.
Oh!
I can do that.
Okay, I know you can.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0. And we're on to acceptance of donations and we'll scroll through these very, go ahead.
I will move acceptance of the donations from our incredibly generous community.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, and you can see, I want to thank everyone who did this. It's, like you said, very generous.
Oh, it's amazing.
All right, any further discussion?
Well, I think you need to read the last number.
Eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Because that will probably, don't, Deputy Meyer, isn't, do we...
It's ahead of last year.
It's ahead of last year, but we start July, July 1st, so this will probably be a...
We have one more week.
It won't be reported until July.
It doesn't even include boosters.
Oh, it seems like the board must be on summer break.
I know it. And please keep in mind that the donations are really not all the donations. So our friends have in our boosters, it's not even included. So our community is beyond generous in how they help support children.
So we do have a motion, right?
Yes.
So all in favor of acceptance of donations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0. And we have our classified and personnel and certificated personnel. Dr. Pulver.
Thank you, Madam President, and team members of the board. The, both the classified and certificated personnel report reflect the personnel actions from the last board meeting.
Okay, I'll move approval of the classified and certificated personnel report as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, any, the discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0. And next, we have an approval of an agreement and stipulation to a student expulsion waiver of hearing and appeal rights. Mrs. Gattulie?
It is moved that the agreement in lieu of expulsion waiver of hearing and appeal rights for student A be approved for violation of the following education codes, 48900C from June 2nd, 2016 through June 2nd, 2017.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0. And we're on to another agreement in lieu of expulsion waiver of hearing and appeal rights.
I have to move closer to my mic? I was told about two weeks ago that I was too loud.
Now I'll be even louder. It is moved that the agreement in lieu of expulsion waiver of hearing and appeal rights for student B be approved for violation of the following education codes, 48900.2 from June 17th, 2016 through June 17th, 2017.
I'll second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0. And we're on next to communication and Ms. Gattulie, we'll start with you.
Um, okay, um, well, it was a celebratory time. I was able to attend McGaw's promotion and both Oak and McCullough's promotions and then capped it off with our high school graduation. It was a great experience. It's such a happy time. I come home from the promotions and I complain that my face hurts because I'm smiling so much because the kids are so excited and the parents are excited and staff is excited and I'm smiling again. It is just a celebratory time and it was really wonderful and I think I am so lucky and blessed to be able to participate in those. I was also able to attend McGaw's flag deck ceremony where they were able to dedicate the new flag pole that they have towards the back of the gym is the area I'm going to say it's located in. That's the area when they have whole school assemblies or have like flag deck ceremonies several times a year. And then the main flag pole's out the front, well, the kids can't be out on Bolsa, you know, Avenue while they're having some kind of a yay, you know, singing patriotic songs and stuff. So it was a community effort in order to get it put there and it was really quite nice and Dr. Gerges did a good job. And I've also attended two county committee meetings on redistricting and one was really kind of interesting. Little Brea Olinda Unified School District that has like 6,000 students actually had seven board members and they have, yes, I know, they have finally decided to go down to five, which makes a lot more sense. And I have another meeting this coming tomorrow evening for that, for a redistricting request. And that's about it. As a board member, you're super crazy to the, about the middle of June and then school's over and you can take a breath. So that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Boyer?
I'll defer my time to Mrs. Hill.
Okay.
And to echo Mrs. Gattulie, it was a very celebratory time. I also had the opportunity to go to baccalaureate. And baccalaureate, Oak, and McCullough were all done on our field at the high school. And we had some concerns with the public. They thought it was going to be hot, we wouldn't be able to hear. There were, there were concerns and it was extraordinary. I didn't hear anything but compliments and extraordinary. The weather was beautiful. The stage was exceptionally well-done. And so I really thought that things went very well. And there was a reception. I thought it was really nice because it used to have baccalaureate and for finishing, they would run a slideshow of all the seniors and that couldn't be done outside. So what they did was they had a reception inside with tables and ice sculptures, sculptures and cookies and it was very nice and ran, and ran the slideshow. So I just thought the whole thing was just beautiful and I was very, very pleased. And our students are so talented and so gracious and it was, it was very nice. And McCullough's went off without a hitch, it was phenomenal. I also had the opportunity to go back to Rossmore. It's always nice for me to be able to go there since my sons are both alumni. And they had a, Mrs. Baradas has, has her way of doing promotion and it was fun and it was great and I just loved, she made sure that she hugged and got a picture with everyone of her students that came through. And I thought that was really nice and very special. And then high school graduation, the weather didn't cooperate quite as much for that one. It was a little warm, but it was beautiful and just an extremely well-done presentation and speeches. And Mrs. Russell, once again, was very gracious since Dr. Barky had his son and I had my nephew graduating, that she really deferred to us and that was really appreciated. Thank you very much. And yeah, shook a lot of hands and it was a very...
And sanitizer.
Yes, we did. It was, it was the, one of the favorite parts of the year. So, thank you very much and I hope everybody has an extremely safe and active and growing summer.
Well, I went to all those things you guys know.
Yeah.
But baccalaureate was, was very special. In fact, Dr. Crop and I were commenting, hopefully next year, the middle schools will have a reception afterwards. It's just, the demographics was such, they were doing the setup of the gym for grad night and everything, so, but there, there is space, they could have it, so maybe next year. And I too went to the flag pole dedication, but here's the part that was so compelling to me. They raised the flag for the first time and because it was right after the Orlando disaster,